All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'll call to order the work session of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. There is an agenda. I see it's Legislative Human Resources Committee and technically it's a full board work session. This is not being broadcast, I'm told, but it is being recorded. Am I right? Okay, so since it's being recorded, please, as you speak, make sure that you note that your microphone is on and speak into it clearly if you would. So this is a work session on legislative priorities. So I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Breevy to take the lead on the discussion and you go from there.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I can't talk this morning. Anyway, on Tuesday, we had our legislative committee meeting and we briefly discussed the legislative priorities. And what you have before you today in your packet is our legislative priorities at the state and federal level that we've come up with over the last, you know, few months with discussions among staff and leadership. And so today, we want to discuss those. There's also a packet, too, that talks about previous priorities in years past and how that's changed. So make sure you take a look at that. And then you'll see our nicely printed packet of our priorities from last year. And we're hoping to do something similar again, you know, once these are all discussed and all of our concerns are, you know, we go through this and make sure this is the direction we want to go. So Lori, do you want to help us by starting off with our state legislative priorities?
Yes. Good morning. I guess the easiest way is we'll just kind of go through these and I'll try to highlight the ones that have changed, which ones have stayed the same. It is reflected on this document right here, but I know it can kind of be hard to toggle between two documents. The first priority under state legislative priorities talks about investing the American Rescue Plan Act funding to public services. As you may recall, in last year's legislative priorities, we were asking for funding to continue addressing the impact from the pandemic. Well, we have received that funding, so we've changed the priority just to ask for direct and flexible funding so that we, as a county, can decide when those rulemaking process continues to the state on all these different programs so that we have flexibility on how to spend that money here at the state level for all of the programs that are listed there. It is not, that list that is there is not an exclusive list. We're just rather giving some examples of some of the programs that we would like to have funded. But the big priority is allow us to have the flexibility to make those determinations. That's the first one.
Are there any questions regarding that? Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. In reviewing the list, I acknowledge it's not an exclusive list, but examples. It does appear that many of those examples were the same we had in the previous year for the pandemic response. One bullet seeing rental mortgage utility and homeless prevention assistance. I was wondering if either an additional bullets were contracting that language with additional language around the development and preservation of affordable housing would be a better example to provide in this instance, since the prevention assistance, the direct assistance for folks was largely a response to folks who faced economic hardship because of the pandemic. But if we're looking at this for transformational initiatives, something that will help increase the availability of affordable housing and preserve that affordable housing that currently exists, will have a greater impact on the market as a whole and, at least in my opinion, be more transformational than the assistance that puts out fires. So I wonder if either we can contract to maybe homeless prevention assistance or displacement prevention assistance and the development slash preservation of affordable housing.
I guess that's a determination for Commissioner Breevy to make a determination.
Yeah, I mean, I see your point of the difference between homeless prevention assistance and also affordable housing. And, you know, I do see that they're two different items. You know, definitely with the pandemic, we had to use some funds for the prevention and helping residents find, you know, a place to go. So, and I do think affordable housing is still a concern, especially with the increase in the cost of living in the area. I'd like to hear from some others on that, too, what their thoughts are on adding that to this list. Commissioner Womack?
A question before my comment would be, as we look at our priorities and the priority list underneath the sub-priorities here, what opportunities was there before this was made for that to be brought up? And where some of this came up in executive meetings, how was the collaboration across the board on creating this list?
You know, a lot of it was reflected in to issues that we still were working through from the past priority list, stuff that maybe didn't get answered or, you know, we didn't achieve the goal that we were hoping to. And it's just in conversations with staff and leadership, you know, what we're moving forward to. And I think one of the things, that's why we're having this work session, is to work through these. And this will go back to the legislative committee and it will go to the full board as well. So this is just a process. But if you have, you know, other things that you would like to address, you know, we can talk through that.
Yes, I certainly support the affordable housing and I'm glad that we do, but I'm very glad we had a rental, mortgage, and homeless prevention utility because I've seen how that has helped and Kent County has been able to help with the funds that came from Kent County. So I'm glad we're giving the state legislative some of the priorities our constituents have asked for. I just, you know, will look further into this knowing that small businesses are suffering and hoping that we bring some attention to the state level for the small businesses that are trying to make it through this pandemic.
I think one thing that came up during the, in the legislative discussion is, is that these are like the standard state, you know, priorities. We do have another set of priorities and as it relates to the, you know, the ARPA budget funding. And then how the funding that has been directly allocated to the county is going to come back to, obviously, the full board for determination as well. So there's going to be kind of multiple layers of approval. It's a little different this year than our normal standard process. So I think, as Commissioner Breevy was talking, these were just kind of, you know, generalized examples. And then we'll get more, I think that scope will get a little narrowed as supplementals get introduced or this board decides how they're going to fund that larger direct allocation.
And I had a question with the behavioral health services. Does that also cover some of our mental health situations as we have more mental health related situations going under with all the stress from the pandemic?
So I can-
You said behavioral health services.
Yeah, I can start and then, I don't know, Commissioner Breevy or Steck, if you want to jump in. We do have, you know, through the state right now, they are working on a behavioral health supplemental for their share or their allocation of the ARPA funding. We have made a additional ask to the legislators through that funding that's separate from this priority for 12 million to fund the mental health consortium of services for the county. So it's kind of generic here, but it's more specific with the actual budget asks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stack?
Yeah, if I can interject just partially in response to that. So really, what are we doing here today? If you go back to our standing rules, it basically provides that the LHR is to prepare a quote "formal legislative program," which is to include a written legislative, a statement of written legislative priorities. So that's, obviously, there's a lot of things that we're interested in. There's a lot of things that we pursue outside of this formal written set of priorities, including the whole spectrum of funding issues that Lori was talking about. But this is part of the conversation that's supposed to generate once a year, a statement of written priorities.
I know. I've been through it many years.
Yes, you have.
Yes, just looking at behavioral health sometime.
And I just want to say, Vice Chair Breevy is correct. It'll go from this conversation to the LHR for formal drafting. Once it's approved, then it comes for approval to the full board.
Okay. You want to take this opportunity, since we're having this work session and some of us are, I'm on finance, and luckily, we have a lot of our caucuses on legislative.
It's usually the other way around, by the way, that those are on the LHR wondering what's going on at finance.
Yeah, so I just wanted to put out that the concern for mental health and small businesses, so that those going back to LH would be able to know what some of us other commissioners are thinking.
All right. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you. So on the affordable housing issue, I kind of find it funny, and I don't know how this is all going to shake out. But, you know, we had a land bank. A former chair decided that the goals were met. We don't have an affordable housing problem and that that should be eliminated. The city of Grand Rapids, on the other hand, feels that we have a big problem with affordable housing and they want to try to bring a land bank back under their name instead of ours. So I guess, Al, my question is, I mean, how do we balance, I mean, is the affordable housing issue dealt better at the local units, like the city of Wyoming's, a huge entity, city of Grand Rapids? Or do we take it from the county approach? How do we blend the two together if we're going to really seriously attack affordable housing?
I think that as a county, it's important for us to have the tools in place to where we can help where help is desired. So for example, some counties create a brownfield authority, even though their cities, some of their cities have brownfield authorities. For the, all the other local units in their county that don't have one, they may want to use a county brownfield authority. The land bank, that is something I would like to bring back for board consideration, maybe next year, because I think that there are some tools that maybe weren't known when the board did end the land bank that are critically important for affordable housing development. And there are counties that have used those tools to actually get affordable housing developments underway. And so I do think it's worth another conversation, maybe next year, to sort through all that again and see if a land bank with appropriate guardrails, there are counties that adopted land banks differently than Kent County did when they first put them in place. And I think that maybe a land bank with different guardrails at the beginning that could be used as one of the tools for affordable housing development in the county should at least be considered.
I think in the meantime, sorry.
Chair Steck, it's fine.
I understand there is some consideration of legislation that may allow municipalities such as the city of Grand Rapids to have its own land bank.
That wouldn't necessarily be bad. We could work with that, but-
Correct, yeah. They are looking. So I mean, so to follow the rules, I mean, I wanted to comment on that, but there's a couple other, more to do with the money that we haven't spent yet. Do we comment on now or swing back later when we go to that or?
If it's related to the first legislative priority, feel free to speak about it now. But if it's something further down the road, we'll address it then. All right. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Just to bring back to the question on the inclusion of affordable housing in this statement on funding, one point, and whether or not the county plays a role or not, to put a fine point on it, I would just emphasize that we already do this through the HUD funding we do receive through KCCA. We are the participating jurisdiction for home investment partnership for all municipalities. Historically, all municipalities except Grand Rapids, now all municipalities except Wyoming and Grand Rapids. So this is, you know, as in the past, we have focused our legislative priorities for funding on services that we currently provide. This is a service we do currently provide, but clearly, it's not covering the gap. And there is truly a need outside of our larger cities as well. So I would just put that out there in terms of the question for funding. So thank you.
You know, with this addition to the priority, I think I would like to look at it a little further and take what we're already doing and see how, you know, it would look, you know, in a legislative environment. So for now, I want to hold off on adding that to this list, but it's something, you know, I'd still like to have conversations about. Are there any other questions on this first item? Commissioner LeGrand?
It's just a very basic question. We're really just talking about trying to get our piece of the 5.7 billion, right? This has nothing to do with the money that we've already been given, but-
Not our own money.
Trying to leverage what we have in order to increase the impact.
Exactly. I think, you know, using our, the dollars that we've been granted, but also how can we work together with our state and federal dollars and, you know, get the most bang for our buck. So.
And then I would just like to back up Commissioner Wooden on if, however it would make sense that we could put anything in there on housing, I think that would be a great thing to do.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, because I guess it's related to this first item, maybe it's like the priority of the infrastructure bill. I mean, it was brought up at executive committee today about broadband and those issues, like where's that prioritization? Is it this or added somewhere else? A more important issue on this, and I have to leave, that's why I'm kind of bringing it up now, like how do we measure success? How do we measure we're doing anything here? I appreciate the line in the next item that says "ongoing vigilance." I assume staff is ongoing vigilance and our lobby is that, lobbyists are that. But how are we measuring success? And, more than our standing rules simply saying LHR delivers a list, can we be asked to do something in our spare time? You know, we, many of us talk to legislators often. And so how can we get more success? Because some of these things have been on this list for my nine years here. And I don't think there's any vigilant action, just vigilance. So anyways, that's my tirade.
All right. Any other questions on this first item? Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. Solid Waste Management includes, under that umbrella, the Sustainable Business Park?
Yes, and we have been having conversations at all levels of government regarding the Sustainable Business Park. Yep. Commissioner Hennessy, did you have a question or comment?
Thank you. We're talking a lot about the affordable housing. And oftentimes, when you say affordable housing, it seems like you're thinking apartments nowadays and also keeping the individual housing stock, the homes that many of us, most of us, will live in, you know, affordable, renovated, and it ties all into the LED program as well. But keeping these is good, you know, keeping up our neighborhoods and all of our communities across the county. So I just had to throw that in, even though it's just a one liner here. But as we talk about affordable housing, sometimes we think too narrowly.
All right. Any other, Commissioner Ponstein?
I'll just add one thing. So on the spending of our 1.276, I think what we're also amiss is that the state's got a huge pile of money that they're sitting on, too. And I feel that we're not at the table like a lot of counties are in putting forward. Things that come to mind is that, you know, I know the conservation district got a line item expenditure from our budget, which they appreciate. They also got a two-year funding. I think it's so much this year and so much next year. But there's still, I mean, I'm not at a MAC board, so I can say, I think we got one of the best conservation districts out there. And, you know, what little they have gotten, they can still do so much more. So I think we need to start advocating more at the state level for their pot of the money and include things like the Sustainable Business Park, include the zoo, you know, and it's not so much the operations. If you ever do a behind-the-scenes tours of that, the infrastructure there is crumbling and it's embarrassing that people have to work in those conditions. And then, having said that, I guess we could throw in funding for the coroner's office because I hear their working conditions aren't so hot and I haven't heard of anything like that's going to be changing. So we've got to get our list long because if you ask, the worst thing they can say is no. But if they say yes, it's going to be a big benefit. So.
Lori, did you have something you wanted to add? Oh, Al.
Just to say that we are shaking the money tree and absolutely looking to leverage all of our investments with state and federal money wherever we can and foundation money, building the tri-sector partnerships. So definitely, we are having those conversations with all of our legislators at the state and federal level. I think maybe one or two left and one we're meeting with tomorrow morning early. So, yeah.
And beyond our delegation, we've also met with Senator Stamos, the chair of Senate Appropriations. We've met with Senator Hertel, Senate leader. So yes, we are having those conversations. And we do have another document that, with another set of priorities that we're trying to leverage for that 5.7 billion that the state is getting, we're trying to align our priorities with their action. Like, we know behavioral health supplemental's coming, so we're trying to focus our priority on that rather than throwing everything at it and getting lost. We're trying to be a little bit more strategic in our approach. So those conversations are continuing along with these policy issues as well.
And I would say, too, the strategy comes with, you know, those legislators that are on certain committees that may be able to make a difference and may be able to provide some more input. So some of those priorities are directed, you know, specifically to, you know, certain legislators. Commissioner Womack?
Yes, and I'm just throwing this out for other commissioners that may find a way to include some of these things or show me where in this budget it may, in these legislative priorities, it might already affect some positivity when it comes to education and job training partners that Kent County works with. Because as we look at affordable housing in a capitalistic country, it is very hard for the government to be able to keep these prices. You know, we do the best that we can, but higher wages is something a lot of my constituents are looking at. And some of the higher wages is going to be based upon education and job training. So just funding for job training and advertising and marketing to make sure that people know the available job training programs that are available. And also, any talk about any priorities for our opiate epidemic that's going over with the overdoses, no matter what income bracket, working class, we have parents. Of all levels of work that are losing their children to opiate, one pill can be split into a thousand different pills by just one addition or mix with another. So the education we went through with to just say no in the 80s and 90s is now obsolete because you can be taking a drug and not even know you're taking a drug. They got designer names for children. So just opiate, the opiate epidemic and job training.
I think some of that would fall under the behavioral health services as well. So all right, I'd like to, yeah, Commissioner Stack, and then I'd like to move forward with our other priorities.
Yes. So in other words, don't say much. Okay.
It's going to be tough for you, Stan.
Well, I was just going to, again, remind the commission that this particular activity is a small piece of the legislative process that we ask of the LHR. And it includes the meeting that Commissioner Ponstein is urging us appropriately to continue to have with our legislatures on an ongoing basis, as well as continuing to review whatever comes out of Lansing or whatever comes out of Washington. So there's a lot of activities here that need to take place outside of the small scope of coming up with this formal written statement of policy.
Could you tell me how, basically, when we had the discussion about land banks at the county and the city level, how does that conversation fit into the state legislative priorities? Because I think the land bank is definitely something at the county level we need to be talking about. And we've been able to do it before, so we know that there's not any state roadblock. So.
Land bank's not a topic on this right now, so we'll have to take that up at another time.
All right.
Our next item is maintain fiscal sustainability for local units of government. And that one's slightly adjusted. Lori, if you want to explain that one a little bit more?
Yeah, so all of the, this priority is a continual one that we have from year to year. The one bullet that has changed is bullet two, is that we are advocating along with the Michigan Association of Counties is to eliminate the county incentive program and shift that funding that is dedicated into that program just into the general county revenue sharing line, make it a lot easier on our fiscal department. This was an initiative that was put under Governor Snyder's administration. And essentially, you have to submit a yearly report showing collaboration and how you're working to leverage those dollars. So they prepare the report, we submit it. What happens beyond that, we don't know. So we're just saying, just shift that money into the county, the general county revenue sharing line. So that is the only bullet that has changed. To Commissioner Bukowski's earlier comment about how are we measuring success? For example, in the last bullet under that, in the last legislative term, we were successful in getting amendment on a package of legislation that was going to go through with real and personal property tax to exempt local units of government. So that is how we kind of measure, you know, success, is that we keep these as broad as we can. So when these packages come up and we see that there is going to be an impact on our operations, then we can ask for an amendment here, an amendment there. But certainly, we can do a better job communicating kind of what we've achieved in a legislative session so that you have a better understanding of the work that the staff is doing. But under that bullet, that's the, that's the only one that's changed, is about the county incentive program.
Are there any questions regarding this item? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if there's ever been discussions about having a bullet point being no unfunded mandates, period, and then go ahead and add, add support for current unfunded mandates and actually get more specific with them. Because when I look at what we just did with, Commissioner Ponstein brought up, the conservancy group that got 25,000, I mean, that's, that's because of the state not funding them like they should. I think we could potentially look at that a little bit deeper. You look at some of the behavioral health pieces we struggle with that we shouldn't be, I just think we can be a little bit more diligent with that wording. And I just wanted to throw that out there for further discussion.
I think that's something we could put a positive- I think that's something we could put a positive spin on. If you're going to make a mandate, please fund it, sort of. Even better.
To that point, it is in Bullet Three, but if we do want to make that language stronger, but we do, Bullet Three does talk about if your existing service, fund it and then don't put anymore in, unfund it. But we can definitely make that bullet stronger.
I think that is a good idea. We, in county government, we suffer from unfunded mandates. A study was done over 10 years ago that indicated counties alone are shorted over $2 billion annually because of unfunded mandates. And the CRC, the Citizens Research Council, has a report online. It's a little dated, but it's only gotten worse and it's really good reading. And I think their conclusion, in my words, is the state government has violated the Headley Amendment of 1978 with all three branches of government, legislative, executive, and judicial, frequently and willfully. So no, this is something we can get more specific on. I've actually testified before Senate committees on this in the past. But I do think that that would be a good add.
So perhaps we can tweak the language in Bullet Three that currently says advocate for existing service mandates to be fully funded and a dedicated and stable revenue stream be identified for all new service mandates. Kind of tweak that and you'd be comfortable?
Yeah, just, I mean, like we said, we are currently strapped with current non-funded mandates. I would like to ask them to fund their current ones that we're dealing with and not do any in the future. I guess I was looking for something a little more along those lines. Something that, you know, at the end of the day, when this gets to our legislators, we'll be able to the following year go, and look, we got the funding that we don't have to do anymore and fill this hole because we had it in our legislative priority. I'm looking for that kind of deliverable.
And Commissioner Womack?
I just want to say I support Commissioner Jones on that. I'm very glad that she brought up unfunded mandates.
Commissioner Ponteine?
Thank you Chair Brevi. So yeah, unfunded, I mean, we've talked about this for a while. Al, do we still have that list for the newer members of our list of unfunded mandates and what it means to our county? So when you're talking to your legislature, you've got it. Because it's, last time I saw it, I think that was back when Darryl was here, the list was substantial of what an unfunded mandate means to us and how many there actually are. So you could put some meat behind it.
Right, that unfunded mandate study, we did that the first time when I was here the first time. It has been updated periodically. We are going to update it again, but we can certainly get out the one that we have. But to look at it, it might be hard. For example, the prosecutor's office, as I recall, had 170-some mandates alone. And so to read through the list, I think we need to put some examples to it so we can bring it more to life, give people some talking points and make it more real, so to say, than a list of things. But I, we'll get that out, Stan, that's a good point.
So when we talk about unfunded, we also mean underfunded, I presume? Because that's really the significant issue, is too many of these are underfunded.
Right, our list is of all mandates is what we'll give you, so, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Womack, did you have a follow-up? You're good? All right, so we will move forward with that slight change. The next item would be addressing environmental contamination challenges. So regarding lead, PFAS, and the statewide sanitary code, which is a new item. And we have members from the Health Department here too that could also address that if needed.
Yes, and I think the only, the change under environmental contamination based out of LHR's discussion, we are going to kind of make the lead section a little stronger. So there'll be some little revised language under lead. But lead, PFAS, other than that, has stayed the same. And as Vice Chair Brevi said, the statewide sanitary code is the new legislative priority that we're putting here. And I'm not going to pretend to be able to explain that. So if there's specific questions, we'll have the experts from the Health Department come up.
Yes, Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I'm glad to see lead in here. I was the first commissioner to run with lead as a top priority. And just happy to see what is going on with lead being a priority. I wanted to ask Adam London when it says educating residents and implementing abatement programs are critical but very expensive. I want to know, as we talk about educating the residents, what are a few bullet points that you would say that we're trying to get out to the residents when it comes to education and things that would help them?
Yeah, so you've expanded the education that we provide through our home visiting programs, specifically the lead, which didn't have much content before. We've also worked with neighborhood associations and providers' offices, probably the biggest one. And make sure that they have the information as they're doing those well-child visits. Schools are another venue which we've been working in to expand education and making sure that families have the basic information, at the very least, and are asking the right questions and thinking about some of the very simple things that they can do short of abatement to reduce the amount of exposure that kids are having in the home. Things as simple as how to sweep and how to clean and how to manage your lawn and your walkway as you're entering the home and where to store shoes. A lot of this lead is tracked in from soils in the surrounding area. So there are very basic things that families can do. And so we've been working to educate along those areas. But also working with the providers to make sure that kids are getting tested appropriately. So we identify those situations where our home, families being affected, and then we work with them. And that's where Brendan's program, Brendan Earl, is our supervisor in our environmental health program, that works in that area an awful lot so we can actually specifically identify what in the home is causing that exposure.
When the data came out that there was more lead poisoning suffered by citizens of Grand Rapids than even in Flint, where do we stand now and where do we stand on testing and making sure we know how many of these children are really affected by lead?
Yeah, so I can't tell you today where we stand relative to Flint. I know that our numbers have-
Before, yeah, that's where I'm going.
Yeah, our numbers continue to trend downward. And that's actually a public health victory over the past 20 years. We've seen our numbers of kids with elevated blood lead levels come down quite a bit. Right now, we still have about 4% of kids who are tested here in Kent County that have an elevated blood lead level. And that ranges quite a bit based on where they live as well. Some of the codes we have closer to 1%. In 49507, last I checked, it was closer to 11 or 12%. So there's quite a variance there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Woodin?
Thank you Chair. I just briefly wanted to express my appreciation that the addition of the statewide sanitary code was put in place. If I'm recalling correctly, the changes that are being described here, we're the only state in the country or one of very few number that do not have such a statewide sanitary code for matters like this, correct?
Yeah, Michigan is the only state without a sanitary code for the construction and repair of septic systems. And there are a large number of states and local units that further have regulations related to the operations and maintenance of those systems going on to identify where failures are happening and to support those property owners so they have the resources to correct those problems.
I mean, usually, you know, there are some times that we'd like to be the only state that does something or the only, or the leader on an issue. But usually when we're the only state that doesn't have some kind of protective safeguard when it comes to drinking water and seeing that we've got states on both sides, with legislatures on both sides of the aisle, having some form of it, it just, it makes sense to me. So I appreciate having you here and-
Yeah, I'd just add to that, that right now, counties have that responsibility in Michigan. So you have a patchwork of regulations that are in place for the perimeter site criteria for new systems and for the construction of those systems. I think that the quality of those varies quite a bit. And because it's a shared resource, it makes some sense. And I think that people on both sides, as you mentioned, have expressed identification of this is a problem that we should be collectively working toward solving.
Mr. Skaggs?
Thank you Chair. Just want to add on to that. You know, I think there's been at least two instances in the past that I'm aware of where we got extremely close at the state level to having a septic inspection sanitary code. I think there's also two instances where we got pretty close on the county level as well. So while I think it's important for us to advocate for some efforts on this matter from Lansing, this is something that we can, this is something that we can grab the bulls by the horns ourselves, both in funding for a mechanism to support homeowners and in taking the authority that we already have into our own hands to make sure that groundwater and that surface water for our residents is healthy or at least healthier. So I applaud this inclusion, but think that there are, you know, additional steps that can be taken on this.
I think it's something that, you know, too, it would be a good thing to have a partnership with the state on and having something that's a statewide, so it is a cohesive plan would be very important with standards. And I think, you know, there's been other resources that we can maybe work with. I know like the Realtors Association has done quite a bit of work on it, working with Eagle more to, you know, learn and understand and kind of get some better direction. So Commissioner LaGrande?
Thank you Chair. My question is about lead and obviously it's great that we're addressing our lead problem. A lot of this really feels like kicking the can down the road since we're not getting rid of the lead. We're just telling people to try not to get poisoned by it. Now that we have this opportunity and we have this transformational money, are you aware of anything we could be asking for that would be a more permanent fix, even if it's only, you know, in some kind of limited scale? Is anyone anywhere doing something more permanent, more effective, that we just eliminate some of these sources, even if they're, even if it's private property, even if we're talking about homes, where we could have a more permanent fix?
Yeah, and I'll let Brendan speak to that in a second. But I would say we are doing more than just education now as well. We are doing the LIRA, the assessments. We're also working with Grand Rapids and some others to provide funding for some of those most affected homes for remediation. That's happening. I think part of it is also identifying where the bottlenecks are right now. Certainly the money for abatement is one of the challenges. But I think right now, correct me if I'm wrong Brendan, having the contractors who are certified and available to do the work is a challenge. So we have discussed workforce development and perhaps working with community colleges and others to try to create funding for that certification, that training. So we have a wider pool of contractors that are ready to do that work. Would be one area that we could improve in. Brendan, would you add to that?
Yeah, so just to go on what Adam said, we are addressing as much as we can. So we have a team of lead sanitarians that go out and do inspections. They do it through some of our grant funds, outside grants. And also we have some funds to do it when we have a lead poisoned child identified. And we try to work with those homeowners or put them in some of the grants to get the lead out or the Ready by Five program that we work with the city and other agencies to try to get that the lead hazards abated in their house. The problem is they're just not enough, to bait lead hazard is expensive. You know, we're talking about siding houses, we're trying to get new windows, you know, removing soil, you know, covering up paint. So it is very expensive and that's what, one of the bottlenecks is we need more funding to do that, right? So we can address more houses. The second, exactly what Adam said, is the contractors, right? To be able to abate lead, the contractor has to have specialized training, you know, and it's difficult work and there's oversight. So we come in afterward to make sure that they did it properly, we're not finding any kind of lead dust, you know, that they properly abated. Well, there's, we need more funding for training to promote that type of lead work and also to be able to pay those contractors more. There's a set amount for them. And right now, everyone knows, they can make more money doing other construction work, right? We're not paying them enough to do it because who would want to come in and get specialized training and then have that kind of oversight on top of them, you know? It's easier for them to make money elsewhere, right? So those are the two big bottlenecks, is making sure that we have good, solid contractors and also get more funding for that abatement work.
Thank you. That's a great idea for getting more detailed asks. Thank you.
Mr. Womack?
Yes, I'm glad you talked about that portion of the education because I've been able to take some minority contractors, some young minority contractors between age 20, 35, and work with the city's program. It was through Organization Link and they were able to get training and pass their state tests to do lead. So I'm glad you brought that up because that's some of the education I was also looking to hear about. So I'm glad Commissioner LaGrande's question prompted that to come up. Thank you.
All right, any other questions regarding this item? Okay, thank you guys. We may have you come up for additional stuff. But our next item is preserving behavioral health funding. And that has been slightly adjusted as well. Lori, do you want to address that one?
Yes, or Chair Stack can jump in. But in the last budget cycle, there was an increase for direct home workers. And we are just trying to make that a permanent line item in the budget this year. Keep that kind of as the base or the foundation. And I do know in our discussion at LHR with Commissioner Hennessy, we do need to kind of work with the language so that it's just, that permanent wage increase is just not limited to direct care workers for mental illness or developmental disability. So we'll expand that to increase that whole line item. So that's really the only change. But again, Chair Stack probably knows more than I do.
Well, I don't know about that, but I'll just say quickly, the issue here is that we are mandated by state law, of course, to provide services. And unfortunately, the cost of those services are such that to have direct care wage workers providing the services, you have to pay them more. And the state has recognized that by way of putting through a direct care wage bump. Probably, the problem is that it's one year at a time. And, you know, employees work not one year at a time, they continue to work. So this past year, when that ran out, the CMH 180 had to step in and dig into its own pocket to continue to pay that. EHP did the same thing. And the other problem, which is not in here, what I suggest, we do take a look at it, it's still inadequate. Network 180 doubled. In order to get employees, we had to double that wage increase. And that did work, but it just shows that it's an inadequate increase. So I'd suggest that we urge that that be increased to match what the market requires. Gets back to the unfunded mandate, right? We have to provide it, but we have to pay more than what they're paying us for it, so. So build it in, make it continuous without doing it on a year-by-year basis and make it adequate.
Any questions on that one? All right, thank you for the description. Our next item would be identify a stable funding for county courts. And we have some members in that community here too. This is slightly adjusted.
It is. So this is obviously a one that we have every year. We kind of just adjust it, but the overall theme is we need a stable and reliable funding source for county courts. We were working through that report that they put out. And I do know the governor's budget does have some funding for that. But there is a real issue that is facing our court funding. As you know, there was a Supreme Court ruling that said that you could not assess charges or fees upon criminal defendants to fund your courts. Representative Verhulen at the time did give us an extension till October 1st of 2022 for that legislation. If we do not get that, another's either a reliable funding source out of the, you know, the budget or they do not extend that sunset, we have a real issue on how we're going to fund our trial courts in the state of Michigan. So we'll continue to work with the governor's budget on her funding recommendations for court funding. But we also are going to be working with the Michigan Association of Counties to get that sunset extended as well. And again, I think Andy is here, so he could answer any other questions if you have more specific about that one.
I've got a suggestion. I bet you counties would give up all revenue sharing if the state would just take the courts back.
Interesting concept.
We'd make money.
Any questions or comments? Any questions for Andy at all or Lori? All right, so that one's good. Our next item would be enact reforms to improve solid waste management. And both of those, or that includes both the Sustainable Business Park that we've been working on for a while and then the bottle bill. And I believe that was also in the priorities last year. The interesting thing about the bottle bill, you know, I feel like this is, it comes up in every cycle. One of the interesting things though about the recycling facility is more people are throwing- throwing their cans and bottles in their recycling bins, but the department doesn't have an ability to, you know, get 10 cents per can or bottle, but other, they're just not allowed to. So that would maybe be some legislation to explore, and I think Commissioner Skaggs may have something to add to that.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, that, I mean, that is a bill that exists. I think perhaps it could use a little bit of work. It was sort of a draft that, that the Legislative Director for State Representative LaGrande put together, and, you know, perhaps could use some workshopping, but wanted to get something in and on paper. But this is a tremendous amount, a tremendous opportunity, because I think if inflation was in place, the deposit would be somewhere close to 25 cents. 10 cents just becomes a lot of work for a lot of people, especially if you've got some obscure craft brew or craft cocktail, and you're not sure that where you take it back, that they're going to accept it. So this is, this is some serious lost revenue. I think, I don't know if you have the number, Lori, but I believe Dar said it was something like, I can't remember if it was 150 or $250,000 a year that could be made, you know, which is real money. And, and so I think this could, you know, we've, we've been hit in recycling by the China Sword policy to not take, to not take our recycling from, mostly from what was west of the Mississippi, but it's marketplace, so it's impacted us. And so every little bit of revenue that we can get, you know, would be, would be useful. There's a lot of people who want to stick their hand in that honey pot, but I think that this is a, you know, the purpose of the bottle bill was to encourage recycling, and I think this would go a long way to do that.
Any other questions or comments regarding that item? Commissioner Ponstein.
Yeah, so I agree with Commissioner Skaggs that there's a lot of hands in on this bottle bill, because it's about money, and the state is one that gets a big chunk of that money that goes to them. So I think if we're going to fight this, we've got to continue to point that out, but, yeah, we've also got to realize that the citizens of Michigan passed this to get the trash off the roads, was the number one thing that we wanted. And I think we cleaned up litter a lot, but, you know, the battle now is about money, and, you know, we got to get in line, and there's a lot of people in line on how that's broken up, but it's going to be a tall order, because I'm sure the state's not going to want to give up any of their share. In fact, they might want more of it, so just got to keep that in mind.
Mr. Jones.
Since we're going down the rabbit hole, I am just curious, right now, is the only legal option to just throw those away, or is it an option to donate them? I think in my community, there's can drives, and I just don't know what that answer is.
Well, how it's, you know, sorted out, it goes into, you know, a pile of aluminum, and then it gets recycled in that manner. So there's, you know, plenty of cans coming in, they're not, you know, handpicked out, like, oh, there's 10 cents, 10 cents. So I don't think it would be feasible really to do a can drive with the process, but, you know, it would go to, you know, recycled aluminum, it gets all put in a big bale right now.
So it's not practical to pull them out?
It's not practical, no.
It's not practical to pull them out, and obviously the individual, you know, if they don't want to return them themselves, putting it into a can drive out on your front porch is a great idea. But, you know, for the, for the oddballs that are being thrown in there, yeah, we're bundling them up and selling them, but it's basically just being sold as raw aluminum. So we're getting something like 1.5 cents per can, where potentially, if we were allowed to, to get the deposit, you know, some of those wouldn't be deposited, you know, people come from Ohio and other such nefarious places. And, and so, but maybe if we got six or seven cents off of that, that there could, that we would get some of that deposit money back. And, you know, I understand Commissioner Ponstein's argument that, that there's a lot of people that would like to get their hands on this, but fair is fair. We are, we would be sending this aluminum that, where the consumer paid the deposit, back to the final recycler, which is just down 131, to get, to get fully recycled. And if we're doing that, then it makes sense that we should be able to get a percentage of that deposit.
Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts on this item? All right, moving forward, our next one would be pass legislation to continue innovative foster care program, and that is a new one. That deserves a good explanation for that one.
So as many of you know, we have a pilot program in Kent County called the West Michigan Partnership for Children. The lack of a better description, the authorizing language that allows them to operate and be funded, there is boilerplate in the State Appropriation Act. That boilerplate does expire in the current year budget, so we need that boilerplate renewed in the budget in order for them to continue operations and continue to be funded. This one, we did score a major victory since LHR, we did find that the governor's office did put the boilerplate in her executive budget. So that is a huge win. Many of you knew two years ago, when WMPC was in quite a bit of trouble with the state, and our own treasurer pulled it out of the fire at the last minute and continued it. So it's a really good sign that Director Hertel and the governor are continuing this program. We do need to make some tweaks in the boilerplate, but very good positive sign that they're supportive of that program, but that is needed for them to continue, pass October 1st of this year.
That's really good news, and this is a, you know, very successful program, and if we didn't have the, you know, boilerplate language for it, it would go back to the state, correct?
Correct. Operations would go back to DHHS.
So it's important to keep this program going, and, you know, it's a great service in our community, serving kids and families. So that's really good news. Is there further talk with our legislators that we need to do on this, or?
Yes, so, you know, before, we did talk to the department, just trying to get the language in, so, one, we are successful there with WMPC to get it in, so we will be talking to our legislators to making sure that they continue to support that and then make any additional changes. Really, the only change we're trying to get out of the boilerplate, to be honest, is to take out the language pilot, so that we don't have to come back every five years and do this, it's just a permanent thing. So that's really what we're trying to, the change we're trying to get is to get it from pilot to permanent status.
All right, are there any questions on this item? Seeing none, our next one is create and identify and reliable funding for secondary road patrol.
This is a new priority, and as many of you know, that our sheriff does receive a state grant for these operations every year. This grant funding is funded from citations that are incurred throughout the state, and as you notice in the description, that not only is ticket revenue steadily declining, but also how this funding is appropriated, is appropriated outside of the normal appropriations process. So it comes pretty late in the years, so the sheriff does not, you know, have an opportunity to determine the programming decisions, et cetera. So what we are asking, and I'm hoping the undersheriff, the sheriff is here a little bit, that this is a priority with the, also with the Michigan Sheriff's Association, is that we do find a steady funding source through to fund the secondary road patrol, and that we also appropriate in the normal appropriation cycle. So we're not getting at the end of the year, and it's a scramble to get that grant funding in, and the sheriffs can make those decisions, you know, throughout, in totality of their whole operation. So that is what the priority is. This mirrors very closely the priority that the Sheriff's Association has as well on this issue. So we'll be working in concert with them to try to get this passed, and I know there's other legislation out there as well, but kind of goes back to those mandate questions.
Yeah, Commissioner LaGrande.
So this is legislation that already exists, that's already out there, and we're just trying to offer our support to it, or we're not, or are we hoping to have it created?
I'm going to let the undersheriff take that one.
Good morning. There is current legislation. It's based, much like what Lori described, the funding is based on the number of tickets, and the number of officers being supported by the program is diminishing, and in fact, it has been greatly diminished, and thus the revenues attached are that much more diminished. So it, we're looking to find that steady, reliable source in order to, one, sustain the same number. Over the years, our numbers have dramatically diminished. I think at one time, we had nine, 10, 416 officers out on the road to be able to help prevent traffic accidents, to help enforce traffic laws. We're down to two, with the latest supplement, it may have gone up to three, I'm trying to confirm that, but historically, we had a much greater presence, and today, we just don't.
Okay, so, sorry, when I meant supporting legislation, we're, I was talking about the legislation and the bullet point there that says would restrict, which I guess that means dedicate a portion of the liquor tax. So is that legislation already out there? Does anyone know, or are we hoping to?
I think that is a suggestion. I don't recall seeing any bills being introduced to reflect that.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. I certainly appreciate the idea of moving away from, oh, sorry, no, no need to apologize. I, you know, when funding is dedicated from citations, we've seen in the past, not, don't know if it's occurred here, but it creates a perverse incentive to write in citations, knowing it'll come back to fund services. So I like the idea of moving towards something like this. My question is, do we know, because we're not asking to increase the liquor tax, we're just asking that a part of it be earmarked for this, do we know what, what other pots of money would that affect, I guess? If you're redividing the pie, what slice of, what other slice is getting smaller?
I don't know, but I can get you the information that I think the Sheriff's Association has kind of put together, that this seemed to be their, the best option, I guess, for that steady stream, so we can get you that breakdown of that liquor tax. And there are other bills out there, you know, introduced that doesn't address the liquor tax, that is just one suggestion. I know Representative Tommy Brand's got legislation, kind of trying to get some legislation to address this as well. So there's a lot of bills going out there, realizing this is a priority, but we haven't got consensus on what the idea is for the permanent funding. We'll get you that breakdown from the Sheriff's Association.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item or comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
So, yeah. So a great place to get that money is out of the share that the state takes, because this is, once again, about fun like the bottle bill. There's a lot of people that rely on it, and the big person that seems to get a lot of, a big chunk of it, is the state of Michigan. So I only suggest that. But the one point that I wanted to make out is that Commissioner LaGrande mentioned that there was already legislation pending or being pushed through. And I think something that we have to do is a full commission and to address is that currently, we cannot go on record with a resolution in support of anything, we disregard all of them. A lot of times when we're in Lansing trying to lobby, you know, the legislature knows the sides that we're on, to have something saying, our county, as a county, has voted in support of this resolution, would help immensely in the lobbying of some things. So currently, we can't do that as a full board. I'd like at least a review of that to see if that can be tweaked.
All right, Commissioner Steck.
Yeah, just following up, I agree, we want to be clear that we are not asking to encroach upon the component of the tax revenue for the sale of liquor that goes to our substance use response. And maybe that's what you're getting at, that, you know, the RPA, $2 are all used to address substance use disorder, and we don't want to encroach on that.
Look at the pot of money to see, you know, if it's under that, you know, that pool of money that goes into the general fund, or if it's, you know, where they think that they have that, you know, funding that they could capture for this program. We'll get more detail on that.
Sounds like this item is kind of still a work in progress, and, you know, we'll continue to work with our legislators on this and make sure we can get the right bill that would be suitable. All right, any other questions on this item? Moving forward, it looks like we have the federal priorities next. Yes, Commissioner LaGrande.
Thank you. While we're still on state items, I would just want to raise the question, I know it's not on our list right now, it has been on the legislative priorities in previous years, and that is the question of bond reform, cash bond reform. And I know that we can't just add it right now, I know when it was originally put on, it did have the support of the prosecutor and the sheriff, and I, you know, I know you've got to tag up to all those bases before it would get on the list, but this is something that would help out a lot of residents of Kent County, and so I would ask that we consider whether, you know, we have that support and whether we could put it on there. It's not a funding thing, it's a policy thing, but, you know, I would like us to consider it.
We have both policies and funding items, too, on here, so that's definitely something to consider, and we'll further discuss that. So thanks for bringing it to our attention. So now onto federal priorities. The first one here you've seen many times, I think, or at least it's been an ask for about 30 years. Because of the increasing capacity at the airport, there's a need to relocate the air traffic control tower, and there's been extensive work done on this. Throughout the pandemic, the FAA modeled virtually with the airport and airport staff, they had a whole model taking over a conference room, and they would, they moved actually where they were, they thought they were going to locate it, but there's placement, this is basically shovel-ready, we just need funding from the FAA and approval from the FAA to go forward with this. But part of this is in the infrastructure bill, which the money hasn't been appropriated. Is that correct? Yes.
Correct, yeah, it's two pieces. One, we need the, we need Congress to appropriate the funding, and then two, the second piece is, is that, you know, as any program, there's limited funding, we need the FAA to consider this, one of the highest priorities to fund. So we'll be, as Vice Chair Bree said, we've been, the airport has been working a long time on this, we're going to be kind of working in concert with them at the federal level to see if we can make sure that once that money gets appropriated, that we are in that top tier of funding priorities out of the FAA.
Yeah, we are working with our, the airport's working with the federal lobbyists in DC, and also when we were in DC for NACO this past week, we met with our county federal lobbyists, too, and also staff from Molnar's office and Meyer's office, and they're all aware of the situation, and they're very supportive in helping us move this forward. So as I mentioned in LHR, it's a catalyst to other things that are happening at the airport. So are there questions on this? Chair Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I certainly support adding it here, as I think it's, it's important, it's critical to the county as a whole, but I want to make sure that, because I know that you just said, the airport has its own lobbyists advocating for the same priority, and we need to make sure we're singing the same song, so that we're not maybe running afoul of them, so.
Lori actually helped draft this priority and sent over all the supporting documentation, and then our two lobbyists that are in DC are meeting as well to make sure that they're on the same message and they're also not duplicating efforts. So, good point.
It's a really strong collaboration, so I'm hoping that in my lifetime, this can be done. It'd be really great. Any questions, any other questions on this? Commissioner Skaggs.
It might be a good idea to duplicate efforts. I mean, this has been a long time coming, and I kind of feel like this is a, you know, a long-term deck to try to get this, there's a lot of money flowing through the city right now, this is probably our best opportunity, and we missed this one. Not sure when the next one is going to come around, so, you know, given, you know, this vital importance to the expansion of the airport, which is, you know, extremely important, and the right place to tell you to try to bring in significant businesses into town, they want to know that they can fly here. You know, we're not a hub, we're fighting, you know, in a new-sized city, so we don't have a lot of the benefits of people wanting to be able to, to fly direct to where they want to get. So really do want to expand those gates like we're doing, we want to have the ability to expand more in the future. So, yeah, let's have, let's have, let's have every lobbyist we possibly can, and every commissioner we possibly can try to push this through.
Absolutely. Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. If I may ask, has one of the main obstacles in the past been perceived competition with the larger hubs, Chicago and Detroit, and as a result? And as a result, those areas in their congressional delegation may not think of this as higher priority? Or is it just simply the amount of money has not been as large before? And so often, middle cities like ours don't make the cut. What's been, has there, can someone explain in a little more detail why it's taken 30 years for us to to try to get to this point?
I think there's multiple reasons for that. And I think you've stated a couple of them. Maybe we've been overlooked. This time around, though, the pot of money and the um goal of airport improvement in the infrastructure plan is really, I think, what's driving us to think that this is probably the best time and it's probably, you know, going to be a priority. It's just making sure we're working with the right people within the department, within the FAA. I would say the airport has a pretty strong relationship working with the FAA. I know the department's been restructured with an additional department added to deal with the infrastructure funds. So, you know, finding out who is the correct person to talk to and um to continue moving this forward, I think is kind of the new challenge. Um but I think it's really been um being overlooked, maybe not necessarily being shovel ready. And I think we're kind of at that point now. I see a lot of positives. So hopefully this moves forward.
Yeah, I don't think we are competing against the major airports. I think there's different levels. We we compete against mid-level airports, but not against Chicago and Atlanta and so on. One thing. The other is I think we had a technical issue a couple of years ago in our application process that maybe put us back a little bit, so.
Outdated master, they being FAA were working off an outdated master plan. So I think that got clarified and now um I think things are on the right path. So again, there's a multiple reasons for it.
Any other questions on the, oh, Commissioner Ponstein.
Yep. Thank you, Chair Bree. So I I'll I'll agree with Commissioner Skaggs that we need all hands on deck if we want it to go through. Because the the FAA is probably saying, well, Congress hasn't released the money. Congress says to the FAA, they're back and forth. And I know at the last legislative meeting, I asked where our senators stood on this. And I'm sure they're behind it 100%, but I think would be even more powerful is a letter from our two U.S. senators for the state of Michigan to send a letter to the FAA that this is indeed a priority for the state of Michigan, not just Kent County. So that's the reason I asked that. So, you know, I agree, we've got to have multiple. Because D.C. is a big, big operation and they like pointing fingers at each other and placing the blame. So uh, just got to keep the pressure up.
There's definitely been conversations with our Senate offices. And I know Senator Peters is very supportive of this and has participated in, you know, events at the airport. And um I'm certain, you know, he'd be willing to write a letter of support, but we'll follow up.
Hopefully both of them would.
Yes, I think that would be key. Any other questions or comments on the control tower? All right. Um, moving forward, we have, let's see, our next item here is the increased behavioral health, health funding at the federal level.
Correct. This one is the same as it was last year. And we are keeping this in the priority, but it also is in our state ask in the whole mental health consortium ask. But what this is essentially doing is asking for additional funding so that Network 180 can have um two more teams of mobile crisis response officers. These are, you know, mental health or behavioral health professionals that are embedded with our law enforcement on those calls. Right now, they are working, um, you know, throughout the county, but primarily the project is with the sheriff's office and GRPD. And certainly, they have one team and they need two more teams. So we're asking for additional funding here at the federal level. But this is one that we're also, it's wrapped into that larger ask of 12 million at the state level. So if we get it at the state, this will come off. But we felt like we needed to keep leveraging on both sides to get this funding for this program.
Are there questions on this topic or anything you want to add? Chair Steck?
Yes, but I'm sure I'll get jerked back at this hour. I'm more than happy to discuss the details of all that if somebody wants to talk about later.
Any other questions or comments? All right. We'll continue to move forward with that one. And then our final item would be addressing environmental contamination challenges. And that was on our legislative priority list last year too. So similar to the state priorities.
Correct. The only thing we'll do is when we make the language on the state side about lead stronger, we'll carry that forward to the to the federal side as well.
All right. Any questions on that? Did you have something to add, Commissioner Ponstein? It looked like you were ready to.
I do have one last thing, but it's not about this.
Not about this. All right. Well, we'll um take a look at the changes, consider that. And um we'll, what is the timeline on this for getting it to LHR again? A couple of weeks?
Your next meeting.
Next meeting? Okay. We'll talk about it in a couple of weeks.
And we can send a draft back out with all the changes before it goes to LHR. So you have, the full board has one more opportunity to look at it.
Absolutely. Yep, there may be additions. Um but keep an eye out for that and we'll continue to work through it. Any other comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
So this isn't an addition. It's just more a process. And Lori and Al, you know, I don't know how we we do this, but in the age of term limits, turnover in Lansing, I think more and more of our lobbying efforts should be directed at the 19 commissioners and using their abilities and their bases to help convey a message to legislatures. I have found over the last year when I've been in Lansing, uh, you know, it's easy to go there that this is our position, blah, blah, blah. I think a lot of times how we're not prepared, and I know I asked Mac to do this for me, is that when you go and lobby for something we want, the commissioner needs to know where that legislator is kind of wavering. And more so is that why he may be against this. Because you're going to be a more powerful lobbyist if you just aren't in there telling them, I want this, I want this, I want that. But if, because he's going to, he or she's going to respond by saying, well, this is why I don't want it. And if you don't have a response back to that, it's just, you should have just called him on the phone then. So just some background of the legislature, the legislative resolution or bill that's coming through is let us know why there's two sides to this story and what is that other side that doesn't agree with us? So we have a response to that because the legislators will ask those questions to you when you're there. I said, well, this is what I believe. What's your response to that? And if you don't have it, you just kind of, you just disregard you that. Is that, you think that's truthful or?
Yeah, I do. I think it's important to know where they stand and also give them ways on how they could, you know, be part of the change or improvement too. You know, if they're not on the committee, who do they need to talk to, I think is important in part of that. Any other questions or Commissioner?
Just as a follow-up, I think that in my years, we used to do these these legislative breakfasts where the legislators would come in and some of them would talk, some would just sit there and listen, some were on their phones. I don't know. But um moving to this process of doing these one-on-one with legislators, I think is much more effective because you will get that, Commissioner Ponstein. They'll tell you right back as to what their issues are and you can flesh that out and deal with it more effectively. So I think that is a very good model that we've been using.
I think you can also give them too, um, you know, a priority of their own. Like, you know, this might be geared towards their interests or their district even that they represent. And, um, you know, they can help move some of the legislation forward. But um I think it's important, you know, what Commissioner Steck said is we did have those legislative breakfasts. And it was, you know, they would leave with all the information, but then there was not much follow-through after that. So I think being able to have those one-on-one conversations, you, hopefully we'll see some more follow-through and be a little bit more effective down the road. So Commissioner Skaggs?
Yeah, just want to, just want to agree with both of you on that one, that, you know, as someone who's sat in on hundreds of these meetings, I think, you know, the relationship is the most effective thing. Like, I don't know that we should get rid of the legislative breakfast. I think it's, you know, a good way to 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 get a maximum amount of information out there. But a follow-up with um with our team, taking along maybe two commissioners that that share some of that geography um and or that have really strong relationships with those individual legislators, I think could be, could really maximize our chances. You know, there's some asks that come out of there, appropriations asks, bill asks, support asks, et cetera. And really being able to to check in on that and to push it. Because, you know, all of these legislators are coming to our legislative breakfast and then they're going to someone else's lunch and then they're having this. And then they're meeting with the Alzheimer's Association and with the Sheriff's Association, all these things. And, you know, they get to the end of the day and they have this whole pile of stuff. And, you know, not going to lie, frequently that pile sits on somebody's credenza for for quite some time. And I think that it's, um, so I I I think that having some sort of organized lobby day where we head out to Lansing and um and have those one-on-ones where you really can get some back and forth would be a great idea. The other thing that I wanted to say is I I just sent off an email to to you, Chair, and to Al and Lori about um fleet electrification and electrical vehicle charging station networks. So some stuff that I'd sent you some texts on before. But wanted to to get that considered about places where we could put that into both the federal and state priorities.
Yes, I do remember talking. I do remember talking about that in Washington, D.C. with the um electric vehicles. We'll take a look at that. Any other questions or comments? All right. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Seeing none. Um any Commissioner miscellaneous? All right, we are adjourned. We'll follow up with these changes and see you in a couple of weeks.